Fifth 2023 Board of Education meeting. We'll get started. Please silence your cell phones and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Hatfield, if you can start with roll call for us, please.
Absolutely. President McFarland is not here. Vice President Roush?
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is present. Treasurer Lotterbach?
Here.
Member Blasey?
Here.
Member Ringgold?
Here.
Member Horowitz?
Here.
All right. All set.
So next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have item 2.1, approval of the minutes from the May 15th, 2023 regular meeting. Item number 2.2 is approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of April 2023 is listed in the check register, prepared by Ms. Holderby in the amount of $6,569,700 is recommended. The distribution of the obligations by fund is included in the documentation. And then item 2.3 approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the below list for professional legal services.
I need to approve consent agenda prices.
Support. Motion by Ringgold, support by Lotterbach. Any discussion on the consent agenda? See none, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that takes us to item three. Board of Education matters and presentation to the board. Item 3.1 is for information only as we have another meeting later this month to approve the budget from Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, Phil, appreciate it, and I appreciate the opportunity to present the very first reading of the 2023-24 budget to you this evening. As you pointed out, Phil, this is the first reading of the budget, and we will not ask you for action this evening on this budget. The action will come at the June 19th Board of Education meeting. And as a reminder to you, there will be two proposals for you that evening. One is the budget that you are seeing this evening. The second is our final revision of our current 22-23 budget. The numbers that we'll present to you for 23-24 will be very largely the same. We might make some minor tweaks to the fund balance based on what our amendment is for 22.
Thank you, appreciate that. For 22-23, but we'll cover some of those changes when we get there. Tonight also does serve as our truth and taxation hearing. We are not asking for approval of the taxes for anyone but the city of Midland. But because we do ask the city of Midland to assess summer taxes, we are going to present those rates to you this evening and ask for your action later on in the agenda. The disclaimer slide, I will like one day not to have to put bullet number one for you. I just change the year on it every single year. But we do not yet have a finalized fiscal year 24 budget. But with an optimistic light, we do have the House, we do have the Senate, we do have the executive, and all are very similar in nature. So it's a little bit easier to try and pinpoint the middle ground of those, and that's, of course, what we've done. We've put our finger in the middle of where we believe those budgets are. We present to conservative estimates this evening, and so we do not have those finalized numbers. And we don't expect that we're going to have those in time for the next revision in a couple of weeks anyway. So that's disclaimer number one. Disclaimer number two, and we've been talking about this for several years now. This upcoming fiscal year is the expiration date for all of our ESER funding. It has to be spent by September of '24, and so I will point out to you what dollar amount and sum that is. And when you get to the next year fiscal year '25 budget, all of those funds have to be gone. So we will be having some decisions to make on expenditures, planning, programming, et cetera, et cetera. So this is the last time that you'll see those funds built into our budget as well, too. As always, once we get a little bit closer to the end, if there are certain things that happen with staffing and we have to move some dollars around to make sure that they're being utilized best for MPS kids, we're going to continue to do that as well, too. So first, let's talk tax rates. And usually, we go through these pretty quickly. But I do want to point out the red asterisk to all board members and to all people listening, the public. This is worth us spending an extra 30 seconds on. We don't talk about renewals on these very often because they had a 10-year life cycle to the last renewal. Up next year is our ask for a renewal of our non-Homestead millage. That's the 18 mills on all non-Homestead properties and also on our hold harmless millage as well, too. So we'll be talking a lot more about that as a board and communication with our community once we get into the fall and winter of next year because those two lines of funding are absolutely essential for the operations of the Midland Public Schools. Again, those are not new asks, those are simply renewals of millages that have a long tenured history. I am going to slow down to in later slides and point out the actual real dollar amount associated with those so you can gauge what the true impact is. So 18 mills doesn't change. That is our non-Homestead assessment. The hold harmless millage, the next slide, I want to give you a bit of a history on that. This year, we are asking for an assessment of 0.4531 mills. For the city of Midland, we asked them to collect in the summer and also in the winter. So we're going to split that up. It doesn't break even at a .2266 for the summer and a .2265 for the winter on that hold harmless millage. And then finally, we have our school building and site bonds. That millage rate has stayed the same since the beginning. The only change on that is that these are now also paying off our debts on the recent sale of our 2023 that we just added on to the books as well, too. So those are the three millage rates that we're going to be asking you to approve this evening for the city of Midland. You will see these come to you again, not at the next meeting, but in the July meeting, where we'll have you approve a document called the L4029 that will formalize these rates for everyone outside of the city of Midland as well. So those are your tax rates that will be presented later on in the agenda for you. This is a new addition to this presentation. I think it's applicable for us to talk about the hold harmless millage. Here's your 20-second reminder on what this was. When proposal A came in, there were certain districts that were out of formula that were able and allowed to, through tax rates, to be able to collect additional dollars for each and every single student. That number was burned into stone when that passed, and that was $412 per student. But there had been some legislative changes that you can see happening at those red stars where the state has decided to pick up a higher portion of that tab, per se. And you can see that that millage rate, back from where we had started tracking it to where it is now, has substantially decreased. The last tweak that they made in fiscal year '21 dropped us almost 1.2 mills on that, the assessment of where we were. So the rate that we're paying now, the average, the past three years, were right around .5256. From '08 to '21, it was pretty stable, right around 1.88. So the burden of the hold harmless millage on our local taxpayer has dropped significantly and continues to drop each and every single year as well, too. It's a formula, the amount of money that we collect based on the predicted number of students, based on property values. So as property values go up, the millage burden continues to go down a little bit on our students as well, too. This is, even though it's a diminishing number, continues to be very important for us. This is approximately a million dollars of revenue for the Midland Public Schools. And if this were something that were not to be renewed, that does have a very material impact on some of our programs. We continue to appreciate the community's support of that. And I'm sure we'll again be communicating next year about the importance of renewing this hold harmless millage as well when that time comes. Here's where our predictions come into play. We are predicting in this budget an increase of $450 per pupil. If that does truly come to fruition, that will put us at around $9,620 in per pupil funding that's coming in from the state and through local property taxes. Enrollment, we are projecting initially a drop of approximately 50 students. This becomes tricky. We do roll things forward. We do have a demographic consultant. We take a look at our outgoing senior class versus what we have our birth rate predictions and our percent of capture of those birth rates for that school-aged children. And 50 students is where our initial projection is right now. And we'll continue to monitor that as enrollment season progresses throughout the rest of the summer. And we will refine those when we do our very first budget amendment for you. So if that does come true, that would put our blended count next year at just over 7,411 exactly. Enrollment, Mr. Sherrill has told you many times that we are in a period of stabilization. You could see our graph does represent that. The one blip in that, of course, is associated with the pandemic, and that happened in almost every single public school district in the state of Michigan. But really, for the past 10 years, we have seen a stabilization within our enrollment. And when you're moving and swinging in the, you know, 30 to 40 to 50 kids, it's not that huge, long downtrended slope that we had before. This slide usually gets glossed over pretty quickly, but as I stated at the beginning, I'm going to slow here just a bit. The red star that you see is directly related to that 18-mill non-Homestead assessment that we had talked about at the initial part of the presentation. A quick recap of the funding. Of the $9,620 that the state allows us to have per pupil in our prediction, our 18-mill non-Homestead assessment has to pay approximately, our prediction, $2,707 of that. Those are dollars that if do not get renewed in that assessment, the state does not make that up. So that is what part of proposal A says. That assessment makes up that percentage of your funding, which you could see is almost 30% of our foundation. It's approximately $20 million in revenue that that 18 mills brings in, which again is absolutely essential operating funds for the Midland Public Schools. And that's something that we will, again, continue to communicate as the year progresses. Our major revenue assumptions, this was a part of the disclaimer. This is it for ESER III and 11T. Our predictions are at the end of this year, we'll have just over $4.3 million left in those funds. We have plans right now to expend all of those dollars in this budget because they have to be spent by September of next year. So we are planning to spend all of those dollars. And again, they're expiring, not renewing. And so that'll be something in the next fiscal year's budget that you will see that line item removed. All three budgets continue to fund us at the increased 31A level. And when I say increased, I mean level with everyone else in the state. We used to, because we could collect hold harmless taxes, only get a third on the dollar for what every single other district. But we were blessed to be able to get full allocation for 31A, and we're predicting a slight uptick because all three budgets do have a little bit of an uptick in there for Midland Public, which is just now approaching $3 million for MPS. That's a blessing for us to be able to serve our at-risk students with those dollars. Mental health supports come to us in two different lines. You see those called 31N and 31AA. We're maintaining those at current levels. Those are right around the $760,000 and $860,000 levels respectively within those. Those are both built into the current budgets for all three. We're leaving those funding levels the same. And our school safety dollars, those that we bought our Evolve systems with, those school safety dollars are again built into next fiscal year's budget. That's just around $870,000. And so we are predicting that that revenue stream will be there as well. Every year, we build our title funds, our federal funds, at 85% of the fiscal year, current fiscal year levels. That's about $1.1 million that we have built into our budget right now. We expect that those will increase to 100% funding when we get to amendment time next year. In all, the budget that you have before you tonight expects a general fund revenue stream of just over $103.6 million. If you have all of our budget numbers memorized, this is actually a reduction in revenues from where we are predicting this year. It's about $6.7 million less in revenue than we have this year, which may sound contradictory because we're predicting an increase from the state. But it's been kind of an odd budget year where we've had a lot of one-time revenues come into us. If you remember, all the way back to the fall, we had the Midland Co-Generation Venture Tax Adjustment. That was a couple of million dollars in revenues that came to us one time, direct in-out. We also had a large push into the retirement system this year. It was one-time push into the retirement system. That's direct in-out dollars as well, too, which is around a $4 million impact. So when you take those and you say, why are you predicting $6.7 million less? We don't see those occurring again. Those are kind of one-time anomalies. And so this does show you what a 5% increase would be without those one-time, odd, non-historically happening type of events in Midland Public Schools. We switch over now to the expenditure assumptions. It's at this point where we like to say thank you to everyone that helped us get to this point. This really has been a multiple-month venture. We started working on this in January, and we've spent hours and hours and hours. We meet with each and every single stakeholder that has a budget within the Midland Public Schools. That's every single building, that's every single department, from business to human resources, to technology, to athletics, to our preschools. We meet with all of them, and we basically ask them what their needs are and what their wishes are, and we build those into our expenditure assumptions. That's approximately a 6% increase year over year. Know that that part of the budget does not include salaries for employees. That's a separate part of our budget, which we'll talk about in a bit. Salary increases for all employees. You'll see that we're going to ask you to act upon the salary letter later on this evening. The general raise is around 2.75% for various labor groups that you have out there. You'll see in your salary letter that we do have the Midland Federation of Paraprofessional wages listed in there at what our current tentative agreement is with that group. We'll ask you to act upon that tentative agreement at our next board meeting. But we put them in there to paint a realistic picture of where we think that those are going to be. 2.75% for all employees is approximately $1.8 million expenditure add for us. And also, please don't forget that employees are moving categories. We call them steps and lanes based on their contract. And that's about a $1.18 million increase for those. An 8% increase in medical, that's a prediction at this point in time because we do not have those rates. And then our unfunded actuarial accrued liability is up about a quarter of a point for us in our assumptions on that lane. We also will continue to contribute to the health savings accounts at our current contractual levels. We do have a surge in benefited paraprofessionals. We've talked about that in various committees this year, and we are maintaining those increased levels. Our federal allocations, we've already talked about, at 85%. And our retirement rates, this is something that's worthy of spending an extra 10 seconds on as well, too. We've reached a historic spot here for us. This is the first time that we've seen those now actually come to a weighted average above 30%. We've been creeping up to that mark for a long time, but that's now set at about 30.3% of our payroll. Continues to be a very large expenditure for us when it comes to our benefit liabilities that we have to pay. Do note, too, that our staffing patterns are elevated at this time. We did elevate them a year back with our ESER funds, and so they are maintained at that elevated level. If you want to see a true impact of that buried deep in your budget narratives, which I'm sure you all read cover to cover, but the very last, one of the very last graphs in there, thank you, John, I appreciate that. One of the very last graphs in there does show our staffing levels, and you'll see a drop in those ratios directly associated to those funds. Again, those are those expiring ESER III and 11T funds at the next fiscal year. As long as you're here, Phil, we'll call this the Phil graph. This came from your feedback a portion away, a few meetings back. And this is breaking out for you of the $108.3 million in expenditures that we're predicting where our budgets lie by functions. And so you can see in the end, the largest portion of our budget, when you tie it together, 77.4% of our budget is tied directly to classroom instruction and direct student supports. And that breaks out for you how our different percentages are allocated to the different areas within the Midland Public Schools budgets. Historically, it's been over 3/4, so it's usually in that 75% to 78% range. This is a more detailed look, and I'm not going to go through each number for you here and bore you with those fine details. But there's a couple of items here that I want to point out to you that are of note. The very first one, please focus to the very bottom in red. Salaries and benefits make up about 85% of our budget. We are a people-driven organization. And so when I talked about the build our budget process or we met with departments, that makes up about 15% of our budget. The rest of it is directly tied to the number of people we have and what it costs for us and salaries and benefits for those people. When you're looking at the exchanges in expenditures and you're looking at the far right side and looking for the biggest numbers that you see, the drop in benefits of over $3 million, that's where your one-time retirement push-in money was. We had to roll those through our benefits category. So with those disappearing, that's why you see that drop. Capital outlay was directly tied to our HVAC project over at Northeast, which was our ESER $3. And when you see the other, where you see about $2.27 million, that's directly related to the Midland Co-Generation Venture push-through on those. So those are your three biggest anomalies on that board. The rest you would expect to see. You would expect to see the increase in salaries. You would expect to see some of those other increases as well, too. But again, because of some of those anomalous events that we had this year, that shows why you have a reduction in your predicted expenditures year over year. It's approximately 5.4% reduction from where we were this year. The budgets are coming in very, very close to where your amendments were in the net end of all of this. What you see on the far left side is your March estimates. We will change those estimates at your next meeting. And then you see in the very middle column, your original budget that we are presenting to you this evening. Right now, we're showing an excess in appropriations over revenue of about $4.7 million. But those that are veterans on this board know that that's not an actual true number because every single year we do have a budget variance. And that budget variance are dollars that are in planned expenditures but don't end up getting spent. And that has historically come in, in the past couple of years, somewhere in the 2% to 3% range. And when you're talking at a 2% variance of a $108 million expenditure budget, that's where you're getting about $2 million in anticipated savings. So we're bringing you that expected budget variance at about 2%, which, if that all plays through, would put you at an anticipated shortfall somewhere around the $2.6 million range. Very, very close to what you originally adopted for this year. And we would expect next year, because of our conservative revenue estimates that we're presenting to you now, you would see an adjustment that would look very similar to that in the end. And with the budget variance, that you're going to be within that, you know, very close to balanced range again at the end of next year when this all flushes out. I've put asterisks at the bottom. Our percentage for fund balance is something that I want to draw attention to again and again and again. You will see that percentage drop. We could have the exact same amount of dollars in our fund balance that we have this year, but because of that surge in expenditures that we have and how you do that math formula, you're dividing the same $30 million in the bank by a higher number, it causes that percentage to drop. So don't panic about a drop in the percentage. We're looking more about what that whole dollar amount is in the end. And again, it's inflated because of all of those odd one-time things that happened and also because of the ESER III and 11T money that's in the budget that wasn't historically there as well, too. So those will change. They'll change based on when we amend the budget in two weeks. It will change based on what the audit shows us we actually captured in variance. And we'll make all those numbers right when we do our first amendment to the next fiscal year budget as well, too. I put this one in big in red, and I want you to just know that the bottom line is the most important. This will have a net zero impact on your budget, but there's new accounting rules that have come out that our business office is working diligently to put in play. What this has to do is how we book our software agreements. And what they're doing now is making us book in current year budgets the longevity clauses within those software agreements. If you remember, we signed a five-year agreement with Dave's team for our new student management systems. We now have to take those costs that are going to be incurred for the next five years and build those into our books. It's going to be a net zero impact because they'll be offsetting revenues and expenditures in those. But when it comes on to our books, it's going to take your revenues and expenditures, push them up, have a net zero impact, but it's going to make those numbers look a little bit different. So please don't be surprised when I come to you in two weeks and you have some odd changes in numbers. It'll be a net zero impact, but because of how we have to book these things, it's going to make the numbers look differently. When Jessica's here from Yo and Yo, she will explain that to you in much more eloquent detail than I am able to do. But she will give a detailed explanation to you on how we're booking those software agreements and how they're looking at in our books. It's kind of like the OPEB liability that they talk with you in there when it's, you know, we know that there's going to be funding there to take care of it, but we have to book it in different ways. It's going to cause your numbers to look a little bit funky. John, it looks like you got a question for me.
So, but it's just the current year's expenses that we have to book. Not like the next five years, we're just accruing as we go, right?
That's correct. But it's going to have, your numbers are going to shift on it. It's net zero in the end, but you're going to look at it and go, huh, it's different. So once we get there, I'll explain that to you, point it out, and Jessica can show it to you as well, too. Say that again? Immediately, that's correct.
For any contracts that are existing and that were in the middle of performance?
That's correct, yeah. And, yeah, and I probably downplayed the business office's stress level on that as well, too. We've got a lot of software in the Midland Public Schools, you can only imagine, right? And so we have done a lot of work in the back end, looking at each and every single one of those contracts. How we book them, John, has to do with severability clauses in there, too. Are they automatic renewal? Are they not? What's your buyout clauses and all of those type of things? And I won't call Penny or Dave out, but hundreds, right? Yeah, with an S of different software and license agreements we have that we've had to work through on the books on that. So know that we'll bring those to you. We've done our diligence on those. Fund balance. Again, this graph is always deceptive. When you're looking at the bars, the bars is actual cash in your fund balance. And you don't see those moving all that much, those have much smaller movement. When you are looking at the dots and the line, that's not a trend line. That's representing your percentage of fund balance. As I've pointed out to you, please don't panic about that drop. The drop that you see does not directly correlate to a similar cash drop. It's because of the surge in expenditures that we saw this year related to those items, ESER III, 11T, MCV, all the acronyms you're sick of me talking about all of the time. But it does look odd. It's simply because of those one-time events that have happened. And again, this will change twice, very rapidly here. Last graph, this was something that Linda Klein and Bob Cooper had started doing. And even before Linda Klein, the name Bob Markey started this as well. This is a tracker of when proposal A went in and what the intention of it was and where we would be if the student foundation had simply kept up with the Consumer Price Index increases. And so we track this over time just to point out to you that if it had kept up with at least the rate of inflation annually, right now, according to our calculations, we'd be about $3,900 more per student or about almost $30 million more in revenue for the school year. So while we are appreciative of the budgets that we've been getting from the governor, the House, and the Senate, still historically, some of those lean years, because they did not get that compounding ability of that foundation, continues to lean toward wanting stability and stable increases in funding. This, of course, is again why it's important for us to have that fund balance that we do because if it does come back to times where you're only getting one, two, or even, I hate to say it, 0% increases, you see our costs go up every single year. And when you don't have revenues that match what those cost occurrences are, that's when you get into some tougher financial times. So on that end footnote and a bit of a soapbox on that last slide there, that leads to any questions that you may have about the presentation or anything in the budget that we can help clarify for you this evening.
Any questions? Brian, can you clarify the MCEA contract had a salary increase in it based on a fund balance? Which we, which we, which increase do we have in here?
So the fund balance number that you're seeing in here is total fund balance. Our contracts are tied to unassigned fund balance. And as we've talked about within our committees, the formula at its inception did not account for these one times. So the salary letter that's presented to you this evening is set at maximums, which is 2.75%.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Which we discussed at FFO, and their recommendation was to bring it that way, too.
Yeah, I was, I was not asking the question for myself, but rather for the public.
And the other one I want to clarify is it wasn't just MCEA, it's every employee group.
That's correct.
So we use that same formula. We modeled it for every employee group.
Yes, sir.
Just one comment, you know, I You know, obviously, the 2.95 mil is extremely appreciated that our voters are, give us their blessing to spend their funds wisely. And just want to highlight, you know, state average, 4.55. Surrounding districts, Meridian, 7. Bullet Creek, 7. Comparable districts, Rockford, 7. Grand Blank, 6.3. Wald Lake, 4.1. Clarkston, 7. So say, we do a pretty good job with 2.95 in the value of the education that we give to our students, so. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Brian, or 3.2 for information, public hearing.
So that's, that's just.
Public comment.
Public comment just on the budget.
Just on the budget.
Yep.
So I have, and then we'll have regular public comment on Section 4, but Mr. Bonnades, or would you, second part? Anybody have any public comment on the budget specifically? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into Item 4, Request Adjusted Board, Mr. Bonnades. Thank you for coming.
Hello. Well, it's been an exciting week at Midland Public Schools, specifically the 6th grade class at Northeast Middle School. I'm very glad one student had the self-respect to leave the classroom while the guest teacher described their plastic thallus and other habits. So did the Midland Public Schools provide any data to the third party that provided the teacher, so that their teaching license, if they even have one, could be polled? Or is it okay for them to violate Michigan common law someplace else, too? Why was a case not even filed with the sheriff is not clear. And then we have President McFarland going on defense over Facebook. Quote, MPS didn't hire the sub. The sub was employed by and utilized through a third-party agency, unquote. So are you trying to say that you're not directly responsible for the safety of the students, and it's been outsourced? But there was immediate damage control, thank you to the interim superintendent. Welcome to the hot seat. I'm just hoping that this whole incident will not now be woke-washed and swept under the carpet. Try a little more transparency next time. Facebook is not how the parents want to hear about the flip side of DEI. Thank you.
Dressing board?
Hi, I'm Angie Kelleher. So just a word about Mr. Bonnades' comment. It seems like, I don't know what the whole story is that happened there, and I don't really need to know. It's convenient to spread that this is what was said, and I don't know if we'll ever really know what happened in the classroom. What I know is that it was taken care of, that if there was an inappropriate comment made, it was taken care of quickly. And I just hope that we're not using it to construct a false narrative about a certain group of people. So I want to say kudos to John Ray Hogan, who is leaving us for a job elsewhere. And I think he's done amazing work, given the challenges he's faced. I want to thank you all for already posting that position. I was pleasantly surprised by how speedy that was. I hope we can give whoever replaces him the support needed to keep growing and becoming more just and equitable. And since June is Pride Month, I thought I would do a little reminder that there are lesbian, gay, and bisexual folks, and trans folks, and non-binary folks here in our community. Some of them are students, some of them are our neighbors. And they are not perfect. There are some folks in that population that make bad choices, just like straight and cisgender folks sometimes make bad choices. I get that for some of us, it seems foreign, or scary, or wrong, or hard to understand, or maybe those concepts and ways of being are very different than what we knew growing up. But I am begging you, if you are uncomfortable with those folks, to open your heart and learn, and maybe get to know a gay person, or a trans person, or a non-binary person. You might have more in common with them than you think. They are humans. They are fighting a struggle, just like all of us are. And narratives based on fear and misinformation can be harmful to them, even life-threatening. There may be someone you love, who is part of the LGBTQ population, even if you don't know it. So please choose to be kind and try to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will close the floor for public comments. Thank you for coming. Next up is Section 5, Finance Facilities and Operations. Item 5.1, Mr. Rutin.
Thank you. The salary letter is a document that sets the wages for all of our affiliated and our non-affiliated employees within the Midland Public Schools. And you saw through that document, it represents 14 different groups of employees. And your budget that you saw this evening represents the salary levels based on what is in that salary letter. So we are seeking your approval this evening on that document, which allows us to put those rates in, and start generating all of our contractual documents for our employee groups, updating handbooks, updating our guidelines, and also getting all of our salary sheets produced for the next fiscal year.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Hatfield.
Say, thank you for participating in the bottom-up budget process that Brian does, so that we can actually provide salary increases like we're doing, so. All in favor of Item 5.1, approval of the salary letter? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Item 5.2 for action, approval of summer tax rate. Mr. Rutin.
Thank you. These are the numbers in the resolution attached to your board agenda that I discussed on one of the very early slides in that presentation. This, again, is just for the City of Midland, because they do levy summer taxes for us. It helps us as a district with cash flow during those leaner months. So that resolution has a lot of language. It says whereas, that's just setting up the legal right to be able to do so. And then it goes further and says, therefore, it be resolved. And within that section, you're going to find half of the rates that I explained to you this evening. So you'll see a mil of 9 for non-homestead. That's half of your 18 assessment. You will see .2266, which is half of our .4531 hold harmless. You'll see 3, which is half of commercial personal property. And then, of course, 1.475, which is half of our 2.95 bond debt. And so we would appreciate your vote this evening, allowing us to send that resolution to the City of Midland, so that they can prepare the summer tax rolls.
All right.
I move for approval of Item 5.2, approval of summer tax rate.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Horowitz. Any discussion? Brian, at what point is, is there a cash flow need, or does larking get big enough that we think about other jurisdictions doing summer taxes?
So typically, it's extra work on your agency to do so. So unless you need cash flow, you normally cooperate with the other agency. So this occurred probably during your cash flow issues, when I arrived, and it's just been a constant practice. The city's gotten into it. They do wait for this. They're like chomping at the bit for us to approve this, so they can get it done tomorrow. So that's one of the issues out there. And so I wouldn't foresee that you need to do larking just because of cash flow. If you do, you've spent a whole lot of that fund balance.
Many townships issue summer tax, though? Do they all do?
Not, not on behalf of the schools. I can't speak for other counties, but.
But there are townships in the state, because many districts have, still have cash flow
All in favor of approval of the summer tax rate? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Item 5.3, Workers' Compensation Insurance. Brian?
We're seeking your approval this evening to renew our workers' compensation coverage policy through the Yider Insurance Agency. The total this year for the policy is $77,720. That's actually a 3% drop from what our current rates are. If you really look deep into that document, it's largely related to a drop in our MOD score, which is a good reflection on district practice. We had about a .08 drop in that MOD score. And so this is the third renewal of that policy, and we seek your approval to be able to re-up with Yider Insurance.
Accept the motion for 5.3?
And the adoption of Agenda 5.3, the renewal of our workers' compensation insurance.
Second?
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Ringold. Any discussion?
Can you chop that out, Daniel?
We usually do every three to five years. This is the third renewal. So within the next year or two, we'll probably go out and seek bids one more time to be able to take a look at that. Yep. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor of approval of the workers' compensation insurance? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5.4, Brian?
Thank you. We have to, by law, run our food service expenses and revenues through a statutory calculator that has a formula built into it. And when we ran those numbers this year, the calculator told us that we do, by law, have to increase our meal prices. This is not something that we have the option to be able to do. The only option that exists within there is if we want to spread that increase out over time, which we have asked to be able to do. The calculator told us it was a 48-cent increase, but we usually like to cut those in half, and do half one year and half the next year as well, too. The last time that the calculator told us we had to increase meal prices was back in 2019. This year, it told us, because of, of course, the surge in supplies and food costs that we all know, and, well, I see my Costco bill, and you guys understand how that goes, it's telling us that we have to increase our prices. So we're recommending a 25 cent per meal increase. That's for both breakfast and for lunch, and a 10-cent increase for milk. You see the complete breakdown in your board packet of the different levels and the different pricing, based on the tiers of the meals as well, too.
I'll entertain a motion for Item 5.4.
I move that we approve of Item 4.4, breakfast and lunch pricing.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Lauterbach. Any discussion?
I'm curious, with the proposed budgets coming from the state at all different levels, they're saying free breakfast and free lunch. So what does that process look like for us if that does pass in regards to this? That money comes to us, and we just pay chart-well this increased price?
It'll be interesting, Ms. Ringold, to see how that's actually going to work when they do it, because there are still rules about free and reduced, and how the accounting is going to work on the backend for it. The net impact on students is that they would not have to pay for meals unless they're choosing options that are above what that tier-one meal is.
And the funding is USDA federal funding, not state. So if the state pays for it, they, technically, you are correct, they're paying the USDA and the federal government.
So the state would pay these prices?
This is all federal dollars. So if the state chooses to make it free, because the federal government has said it's not, then the state technically, as Brian said, it'd be interesting, the backside and all the accounting and how it occurs, but there's a flow-through or something that's going to occur, because those are federal dollars, USDA.
We could have another one of those weird, I said anomalous one-time weird things that are coming in. You may have another one of those in our food service accounts, because there might be state offsets coming in that we're going to then have to flow through. I don't know how it's going to work, but you are correct, all three budgets do include it.
But, just lunch, I believe, not breakfast, or vice versa.
I believe it has both.
I looked today, and it says all three are breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, but I'd have to confirm that. We'll see what comes out of them.
And you know what it's actually.
CREC, too. So more details to come.
Okay. Thank you.
So would there be any advantage to capturing that full amount? If our calculator is telling us almost 50 cents, are we shorting the money that's going to come in to us? We're still out of formula.
Yeah, so what you're saying, should we charge the state more? Is there benefit? I don't know that there is, because it's just a flow-through to us. I see a negative if they don't do both. So we'd have to go back and check any of that, and that we hurt our own students in charging more. So I'm not seeing that there is, Brad, any advantage to us locally. But that's off-the-cuff answer, I guess, too, so. We can do some looking at it.
We can, we can.
We certainly haven't crossed this before with the state picked it up.
Right. Once we see the details, we can always make amendments to this as well, too, along the way, if it turns out that it would be advantageous for food service.
Good discussion. Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor of approving Item 5.4, breakfast and lunch price increases? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brian's last update, at least for now. Item 5.5 for action, food service equipment.
Thank you. We have an opportunity to purchase some food service equipment that is actually in stock, that we believe we're going to get before the end of fiscal year. And so we jumped at that opportunity when we heard that there was some stock available from some different vendors. So before you, we have a proposal to give a purchase order to Stafford Smith for $96,108. There's a complete list of the items within your board agenda. In general, it includes slicers, steamers, a smoker, refrigerator, and other miscellaneous items as well, too. So we'd appreciate your approval to be able to purchase those items through our food service funds, with your approval this evening.
I move that we approve Item 5.5, food service equipment purchased from Stafford Smith in the amount of $96,108.
Motion by Ringold, support by Lauterbach. Any questions, comments?
In the past, we've had a surplus of these funds. Where do we stand? Does that help bring it down?
Will it bring it down? Yes. We anticipate that we will still have a surplus of funds as well, too, which is directly related to unanticipated revenues that keep coming in. One example is, we just got a critical supply chain shortage revenue of about $170,000, which is a blessing. It's great. But it does put you in breach of what their statutory allowance for your surplus is. Currently, you're allowed to have three months of expenditures as your surplus, and we are constantly monitoring that and trying to spend those things down. But of course, supply chain's been an issue for us as well, too. We've been trying to buy vans for a long time, and you all know the issues that we have with those. So I would anticipate, when the audit comes, we're going to be a lot closer than we were last year. But these unanticipated revenues, you might have another management note saying you have a little bit too much money, which is, again, a good problem to have, but not a material finding in your audit.
Good.
But based on your description, these are all, presumably, all these items are items that we've been trying to get for a while.
That's correct. Yep. Couldn't get slicers for the longest time. Now that they've come in, they're excited.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving Item 5.5, food service equipment? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so that closes out Finance Facilities and Operations. Item 6, Correspondence to and From the Board of Education. Item 6.1 for information, Letters to the Board of Education and the two individuals listed. Item number seven is for information, Scheduled Activities. All of our regularly scheduled meetings are listed in the agenda packet with noting that June has two, so we meet again in two weeks on June 19. Item number eight is Studies Session Discussion. Any points of clarification? I have, I emailed each of you about this, but I did have time constraints, made me step down from the MASB Board. Obviously, organization that helps all of... down from the MASB Board, obviously, organization that helps all of the Michigan, the school boards in the state of Michigan, so just want to make that public for everybody. But due to personal time constraints, I need to focus on this district over that greater one, so.
Do they post it there? They post it then?
The opening, yep. Mike, we'll turn it over to you. All right. Great, I have a motion to adjourn. All right, we stand adjourned.